Happy New Year, everybody. I'd like to welcome participants to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting, joint meeting with the Select Board of January 9th. I'd like to call the Planning Board to order. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio said she can't make it. Ms. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Olmee said he can't make it. Ms. Tenny?
Here.
And four members being present, we have a quorum. I'd like to remember all board members, guests, has to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak, and this meeting is being recorded. Okay, our first item on our agenda is acknowledgement of receipt of correspondence. And Gail, we got a town of Wenham and a letter from Mr. Flood. At this point, I would allow public comments on items not on the agenda with unlimited time if anyone wished to speak. Okay, so this is joint meeting with the Select Board to interview Select Board candidates for the vacated Planning Board seat. Before we get on with the interview, I just want to make a brief statement on former Board member Gary Gilbert, who's a hardworking member of the Board who did a great deal of research on his own and presented it to us to help make us better decisions for the town. Among his accomplishments, he was three years on the Master Plan Committee, seven and a half years on the Board, three years on his EBA. He put together a citizen housing committee. He written and got changed citizen petition laws and provided professional planning perspective to the Board. I'd like to write Gary a letter complimenting his service to the Board on behalf of the Board. Are there any objections?
No.
Okay, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Becky Jakes.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Select Board for January 9th, joint meeting with the Planning Board. Roll call vote. John Round?
Here.
Ann Harrison?
Here.
Brian Solacey?
Here.
Kathy Bellata?
Here.
And Becky Jakes is here. So we have a full Board.
Okay, at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Greg for candidates that we received interested in.
Good evening. Thank you, Ron. So as folks know, but I'll just quickly review. When there is a vacancy on an elected Board, then it is the requirement of state law that the Select Board and the Board where the vacancy occurs meet jointly, and they are to appoint an interim member, and that member serves until the next election. We have with us this evening Susan Filbrick. She's stepped forward to be considered as an appointed member for the Board as that interim appointment until the next election. And I'll let Susan introduce herself and tell her a little bit about her own background. But the format tonight is for you to conduct a brief interview and have both Boards ask questions of Susan to ascertain her background and the skills that she do to the table. And then, once you're satisfied with the questions you've asked, then if you're so inclined and are ready, you can vote to make the appointment. It's a majority vote of the two Boards combined. So with that, I turn it back to Ron and Becky, and you can conduct your interview.
Hold on. Okay.
I think I'll leave.
Susan, would you want to just give us a brief?
Good evening. My name is Susan Hanson Filbrick. I've lived in Manchester for almost 24 years. I decided to get involved in the town during the past year, but was weighing what might be the right opportunity. And then I saw the vacancy notice in the tides and said, I think the Planning Board might be a good fit for me. I don't have any Planning Board experience, but I do have a career in public service. I was a state prosecutor for five years here in Essex County, primarily in Lawrence, but in Salem, in the Superior Court. And then I moved into Boston and worked for the Justice Department in the Organized Crime and Racketeering Strike Force in the U.S. Attorney's Office in Boston for about 12 years. And through that career, I was a very proud public servant, and I am excited to contribute again to our town. It's different, but I think some of the skills are the same. The skills I think are the same are the ability to communicate, to negotiate, to research, to write. Knowledge of the law will help, I think. How to read a law, and how to read case law. And I think I can bring those skills to the table and hopefully help out. After I stopped working, I did, I was, the purpose of stopping was to spend more time with my family, both my children and my elderly parents. I thought it would be sort of a temporary break, but it turned into a permanent break. But during that time, I did volunteer work through my children's school and serving on the Board of the United Way and an orchestra that my daughter was part of, as well as other things. But I think this would be a really exciting opportunity to start to give back to the community. If you have any questions?
Yeah, so do we want, I guess we'll start. Susan, are you familiar with the master plan that the town has made?
I have been reviewing it. I can't say that it's in memory, but I have been reviewing it. And it's a really impressive document, actually. I think the Planning Board did an amazing job on putting that together. And I remember doing the survey and thinking that the survey was a really good survey, asking the right questions. And I was looking actually at the summary of the results because obviously that's what guides the work of the Planning Board. So I will become more familiar with it, but.
She will.
I don't have any questions. I do know Sue personally and can speak for her integrity and hard work and thoroughness, given something I've seen her in action on. She's always well-prepared. So I don't have any questions. I appreciate. I think a legal, additional legal experience would be really helpful.
Ms. Foley?
Hi. Thanks for your interest. We're all volunteers here on the two boards, and it does show a real commitment to giving back to the town. So having someone step forward is very much appreciated.
One question I have for you is, I think you said that you worked directly for the state before? Is that right?
I did.
So we're going to be embarking on a process that the state has, you know, given all the transit access towns for finding new zoning overlay districts to provide opportunities for more housing, for diverse kinds of housing. Does your, how does your past work for a state agency and knowing the law, how much that weigh in on your understanding of the process that we're about to embark on? And how insight into your past work might also inform, not the specific technical content, but the process that we're about to go through?
Somewhat the process. I think it will be helpful. But what I did was quite different from interpreting zoning laws. That will require some study. But I am familiar with how to read a law and how to look into provisions of the law and how to interpret the law. And I think it can be helpful in terms of getting the message out to the community of what the law means, you know, and why we need to go through certain processes. But it is, it's different. That will be a civil process, and I was not involved in any civil processes.
Do you think you have insight into the kind of working of the state in the sense of the types of processes they set up? I see that you're talking about it's a different process because it's civil, but.
I think the government in general, yes. Yes. I loved being a public servant, but the government process can be slow sometimes and compromise, and I'm used to that. I can't say that I embrace it, but I think it will be helpful.
Thank you. Ron?
Sarah?
Sorry. I think we can ask this of many people and maybe get the benefit of lots of people's wisdom, and that is, you said, I think you went to town meeting, and clearly that zoning is a complex set of issues and a dense body of material. And people don't have much time to understand it or to embrace it. Do you have any thoughts about the most effective ways that we can help people to understand the issues, not just zoning, but the issues before the town? And yeah, any thoughts on effective ways to do that or more effective ways to do it?
Well, I think some of the communication has been really effective. Why was, when I was looking at the zoning provision today, I came across one of the letters that I think it was Chris did in the Cricket. I thought it was very good and really spelled things out well. And I think trying to distill it into a, you know, a short document in terms that are not legalese is really helpful. And I thought that did a really good job. But there are lots of different mediums we can use. But I think some of the charts that were put together before town meeting were helpful. There were still a lot of people who seemed confused. And I think part of that is they had not put in the time to really spend on it. So it's hard to really simplify things in such a fashion as to overcome that.
John?
Yes, thank you very much for raising your hand. So it's very hard to find people to play a role in so many, in the many committees that we have here. And speaking of committees, you said you saw, you were at the town meeting and said you'd like to join the Planning Board. At any point in time, we have probably a dozen openings on lots of different committees. This one in particular came up. What's your interest specifically in the Planning Board? And how does that fit? I know that you mentioned a little bit about your skill sets and interest. Why are you interested in joining the Planning Board?
Well, I think the Planning Board plays such an important role in the community and, you know, the review process, trying to apply the master plan and, you know, focusing all the work sort of through the lens of the master plan. And I like that, that concept. There's, there are a lot of important issues that come before the Planning Board, but yet it's the Planning Board. It's not the Finance Committee. It's not the Conservation Committee. It's not the Select Board. It has its own rails. And I think the responsibilities of the Planning Board in thinking about the best use of land and reviewing applications in terms of use of that land, it's appealing to me.
It's one of the busiest Boards. Thank you.
Can you come back to me?
Before we do, I'm sorry. Is it, there's somebody on Zoom who should be muted, I think? I keep hearing a lot of.
I've been muting everyone that I see. Up there's one.
I want Brian to get all the.
Seems like we're following the protocols.
Ah, yes, always. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Got it.
Brian Solacey?
I want to echo what John said as far as thanking you for stepping up. It's a big commitment, and you're prepared. I have to, there's a lot of reading, right? So a lot of reading. And I have no question. I think that it's admirable that you stepped up. And I just want to make sure that, you know, as far as, I think the Planning Board has to decide to the most, you know, point as far as if there's some synergy and how it fits in with them. And I'm going to listen to what they have to say.
I confess that I know Sue outside of this arena. And like Sarah, I've always been impressed by her organization and straightforward approach to things. And I guess some of the things that are coming up that are, have been put forward by the Planning Board and not yet acted on by the town meeting are controversial. And what can you say about accessory dwelling units? For example. Just to pick a, I'll pick a random.
Go ahead. Well, I don't have one, but it's a complicated issue. And boy, there's a lot that goes into that. You're talking about dealing with Airbnbs and rental properties and garage apartments and all kinds of accessory dwellings. And I've started to see people build cottages in their backyard. It's, I can see why it's controversial. But on the other hand, people do need housing. And accessory dwelling units are used for housing for local residents who otherwise wouldn't be able to live in Manchester. It's something to look at. I think there are pros and cons, and I'm sure I have a lot to learn about it, but.
Can you look specifically about the bylaw that's been proposed?
I did before the meeting, but I haven't in the past couple of weeks.
I assume that in your task as a prosecutor, you're used to controversy. How do you, how do you approach a situation where two people just, there seems to be no point of common agreement? I realize it's an impossible question, but.
You just keep working at it. But you, at the end of the day, you know, there's one path forward. And sometimes that just requires moving on to the right path forward, even though there's still controversy and unmet expectations, I guess. You know, the town votes, and the Boards vote, and what the Boards vote on, that's what's going to go forward. And what the people of the town vote to do, that's what needs to happen.
Which leads, of course, to our new transit-oriented development. How would you go about trying to persuade people that this is not going to ruin the town by increasing density and traffic?
Sue? I mean, Ann, may I jump in with that question? I think that that's perhaps premature in terms of asking a question that's not even really been put forward to others even at this point.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, but I think it's all premature. I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Sorry. I do, first of all, as everybody else has said, thank you very much for stepping up. And as Ann pointed out, it can be controversial, some of the things that may come before you. And we can't always have unanimous decisions. I don't think you have a problem with that, given what you've done in the past. Do you have any time constraints?
I don't have any time constraints. The only thing is I do have a private conflict with one of the February meetings. But other than that, I have no time constraints. I've only retired.
And also, in full disclosure, I too have been acquainted with Sue for many years. And, but, but to that, I can say that I have known her to be a very honest person with immense integrity. And I would ask, is there anything that you have seen the town in the past that you think, from the Planning Board perspective, that, I'm going to retract that. Never mind. I'm all done.
You're letting us, Kathy Bellata?
Oh, Kathy Bellata, sorry. Kathy Bellata on Zoom. Kimony?
Hi, how are you? Thank you very much again for stepping up. Really appreciate it. I wanted to, I know at the beginning you mentioned that you may not have specific domain experience in land use, et cetera. But do you have a philosophy or any thoughts that you can share regarding the difference between by right zoning and zoning that requires, you know, special permits? That, some of the changes being proposed, you know, for, by the Planning Board, which we didn't quite get to vote at town meeting, you know, some are by right, others are special permit. And that's often, there's often a lot of discussion about, you know, whether a zoning change should be by right or a special permit. So I just thought I would ask if you had any philosophy around that.
I don't have a personal philosophy. The term in the state regulation is by right. So I think we need to look at what we have that is by right already and look at things that might be expanded if we decide to go that direction, you know, to comply with the regulation so that we're able to receive the funding. But personally, I don't have a philosophy. I know that we already have some by right. At least that's what I understood from the presentation and what was provided prior to the last town meeting. So we obviously.
I'm sorry. My question wasn't specific to the MBTA zoning. It was just more of a general question. Some of the zoning, proposed zoning changes that the Planning Board had worked that we didn't quite get to vote on at the November town meeting, you know, as they were being prepared, there was a lot of discussion around, you know, should this be by right or should a special permit be required? So it wasn't really, my question wasn't related to the MBTA zoning specific. So, sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure how to answer it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
That's okay. I just wanted to.
I don't have a philosophy.
You have philosophy, then I want to hear it. You don't, but that's fine. One other question. You mentioned that you have started to peruse the master plan. I think that's great because it is kind of the big strategic roadmap that is guiding a lot of the decisions in town. As you started to look at that, are there any areas where you, you know, really feel strongly about that either you agree or disagree? Or just can, is there anything that kind of jumped out at you, I'll say, in the master plan that was of interest?
Well, I think the master plan is an excellent forward-thinking document when, because already dealing with the MBTA regulation, you can look to the master plan to help you guide through that. But I guess one thing that jumped out at me today was, you know, the preference to preserve and expand the use of our town's recreation. That, it jumped out. I didn't remember that that was the first priority of almost, of the large percentage of people who responded to the survey. And it is what makes Manchester so unique. And we have to balance our beaches, our recreation space because it's really important to our residents to be able to take advantage of that and to keep it up. And we have to balance that with the fact that we're a small town. We have a MBTA commuter rail. We have a very small commercial district. There's a lot to balance. And we have an excellent school system. So just looking at how residents prioritized all of those things is something that, I guess, I was focusing on when I was reading it. And I guess the other thing I would say is there was a discussion of senior housing that I had never really focused on before. And I think that's a big part of the results of, one of the results of the plan that's important to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? Okay.
I move that we accept the application of Susan Hanson Filbrick to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote from any discussion. Take a roll call.
Just a discussion that, may I?
Yes.
You seem to come with a very even keeled approach, and you're clearly experienced in being a prosecutor and making arguments, which I think is helpful, but also negotiation, compromise, seeing different points of view, I think are critical to keeping us moving forward as a Board. And so I don't know you outside of this Board we're meeting today, but I, well, we met briefly last time when you came to our meeting. But my sense is that you have an open mind about these matters and willing us to participate in an opening, listening way. Is that?
Yes.
Am I forecasting or?
Yes, absolutely.
So I think that that, aside from your notable skills as a prosecutor and attorney, I think that that is of value to this Board. And so if you're elected to the Board today, I would welcome that point of view and that, which you bring.
Before we go forward. I just want to get procedural clarification from Greg. Are we, are we, are we able to make a motion from one Board seconded by another, Greg? Or do we need to do them per Board?
No, one motion as a joint is sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moved by Sarah Creighton, seconded by Ann Harrison.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'll take a roll call vote from the Planning Board. Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes.
And roll call vote from Select Board. John Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacey?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes says yes. Looks like it's.
Kathy, Kathy.
Kathy Bellata. Thank you.
I'll get your back, Kathy.
Thank you, yes.
Welcome aboard.
It's unanimous. I don't know that that's, woo.
Priority for us.
And so the next step is for you to go to Town Hall and have the clerk, Diane, go swear you in.
Great.
And then there is a conflict of interest that you need to do on. And then there is a conflict of interest that you need to do online.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll fill you in tonight.
Okay.
Great.
Time is perfect, it's 7:02. And on our agenda, before we get into the MBTA, is to, I'd like to open the continued public hearing on the special permit application for a site plan approval for Manchester Parks and Rec. This is to construct a youth athletic field with 25 parking spaces on the site of the old burn dump, 156 to 160 Pine Street. Without the needed quorum to vote the special permit forward, I'd like to continue the public hearing to our meeting on the 13th. And Betsy, do I need to open, have a vote from the planning board to open the continuation? Or just continue it?
No, I think what you want to do is continue it to a time and date certain. So you're continuing it to February 13th at 7:00 p.m.
So I'd like to move to continue the public hearing to February 13th at 7:00 p.m. Is that right? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Creighton?
Present.
Ms., oh, that's right. Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, continue to then. Okay. The next item is the MBTA Communities Multi-Zone Family Zoning District, Section 3A, joint meeting with the select board. And at this time, I'd like to call on our interim town planner, Betsy Ware, to give a project overview.
Thank you. You should have received a number of documents relative to the MBTA zoning. And let me just start by saying, this is a group project. This is a team effort with several boards and commissions involved, as well as several staff people involved. The, probably the most important, so probably the most important document of that package is the project timeline. So what that involves, so let me just, quickly, on what MBTA zoning is. The state has asked communities that have transit stops to adopt zoning that is at a 15-unit-per-acre density. Manchester's particular mandate was 37 acres. Forty percent of that acreage would need to be adopted with, within a half a mile of the MBTA station and with the remaining land elsewhere. And this is a mandate that relates to creating more diversified zoning. The zoning doesn't necessarily need to be affordable housing. So there seems to be some confusion about that. It is not necessarily affordable housing, it's basically diversified housing. There is no requirement for production of that housing, which is kind of a little odd to me anyhow. But what I think is based on the fact that you have two municipal documents that state that you would like, those documents being the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan, which advocate for diversified housing, particularly, we have a senior population, the demographic of such is that we have a huge number of, almost probably within the next 10 years, it'll hit 40% of the Manchester's population being over 55 and perhaps wanting to downsize but not having the housing to do that. The, and in downsizing, those existing houses would become available to new families coming into town. So it's going to be an interesting dialogue. It's an interesting opportunity for us to pursue this zoning over the next two years. And so Ron has pulled up the screen that talks about the project timeline. And so I will just quickly review that. So in January and probably some of February, we'll be looking at the state's requirements. We'll be looking at our planning documents. We will be defining who is going to be involved in this. And we've already got select board, planning board, Greg, myself. Tiffany is the communications person. Sue Beckman is involved in some of the strategic work. I will be involved. And the public in general, what we want to try to do is get as much input as possible on this, on this zoning. So we will be having a series of working sessions as well. So, so we've, we've created a draft communications plan. And then additionally, we have a requirement of submitting an action plan, which I know the planning board members have received a markup of the action plan that has to be submitted by the end of the month. Now, the, unfortunately, it's not looking like it's in great shape because the state only gives you the option of this online submission. So most of it is, has been done in handwriting on an existing document. So, so that, the big requirement right now is for us to get the action plan in by the end of the month. And basically, what that action plan does is that it enables the town to move forward on considering not only this MBTA zoning, we will be weighing our options and listening to the residents of the community as to whether we want to move forward with, with the next two years of understanding how to operate with this zoning or how to implement this zoning, or whether we want the zoning or not. So then in, so January, February, we will be looking at what we need for technical support. We'll be reviewing the compliance requirements and applying, the state has a model for us to compare with our existing zoning. So we'll be taking a look at that. Understanding non-compliance impacts and options. And then defining the action plans for both compliance and non-compliance. So if we are non-compliant, the state will basically not allow the Town of Manchester by policy to apply for certain grants and will also cease to provide the housing authority with additional funding for upgrades of the units that presently exist, the planes in Newport Park. So March through June, we'll be looking at memos and analyzing options for compliance and non-compliance and creating information packets, briefing packets, and conducting listening sessions and engaging the community for input and feedback. So July to December, we'll be looking at planning documents and looking at impacts of, financial impacts if we can obtain any grants or what the financial impacts would be on putting this housing in place, putting this zoning in place, keeping in mind that there's no performance requirement. And probably after, starting in September, we'll be conducting some forums for our findings. In January to June 2024, we'll be looking at draft zoning if we decide to move ahead with compliance. We'll be defining the next steps if we're non-compliant, how to make up for those funds that we could have potentially received under the various grant programs that we will not be allowed to pursue if we don't pursue the zoning. Develop a communications plan to further provide information to the public and do some additional information sessions. And potentially, if we decide to go ahead, we might have a zoning proposal for spring of 2024 town meeting. Otherwise, we'll move forward for a fall town meeting, seeing if that works. And again, my door is always open, Greg's door is always open. There's a number of people who, we will be putting information on a regular basis on the town's webpage. Tiffany is terrific in terms of getting information out there. And the various boards will be working based on information to try to make the best decisions available to address this, the zoning. So if I missed anything, Greg, Sue, Tiffany, please weigh in. But this is a team effort, and it's a team effort over the next two-year period.
Thank you, Betsy. Susan or Greg, any comments?
So just briefly, thank you, Betsy, for a very nice overview. And the fact that you started out with our Housing Production Plan and Master Plan, that stresses the need to diversify our housing. Now, it may turn out that we don't want to diversify in a way that the state is asking us to. So we may end up saying, thank you, but no thank you, to MBTA zoning. But we still need to address our housing diversity issue, one way or the other. And I think we should view this, this two-year process that we're outlining as a, as an opportunity to really engage as a community to decide how we are going to address our housing issues. The town is changing, and part of that change is, is being fostered by our current zoning. And we should take a hard look at that. We are losing student population. And there's a reason for that. It's, it's not easy for a young family to move into town. So I'm not saying that, that the MBTA zoning prescription that the state is, is asking us to undertake is the answer. We need to decide that, and we have two years to make that determination. But I think it is clear that we, we need to address how we are going to diversify our housing in town in order to remain a vibrant town that, that has a diverse population. I don't think we want the town to become a retirement community. I don't think we want a town to become a vacation destination in second homeowners or, you know, snowbirds only. Snowbirds are fine, but we don't want them to be the only people in town. So I, I think we, we have an opportunity here, here to, to reflect, to seriously engage with each other in a deep conversation about what it is we want the town to be. And this is an opportunity to help us shape that. You know, there's a saying in the planning world, you get what you plan for. But if you don't plan, you're going to get something that you didn't ask for at all. Change happens, whether you want it to or not. And, and if we can come together as a community and proactively decide, yes, this, these are the directions we want to head in, we can, we can steer the future that we want. And I know that, that there's a lot of emotions running high in terms of the housing and in terms of MBTA zoning in particular. So let's harness some of that passion and energy and compassion, or passion, and, and channel it in a way that will produce something lasting and meaningful for the town. And I think we have that opportunity over the next two years to do that. You know, we, we're not that far off from, from complying with, with, with the zoning, with what the state has asked. We currently, for example, in our general district, allow an existing home by right to be converted to three units of housing. Not very many, not very many, excuse me, not many property owners have taken advantage of that, but it is on the books already. So that's, that's a 21-unit-per-acre density that would be allowed. So it's three units on 6,000 acres. Actually, it's higher than that, it's close to 28. So that's a high density that we already allow by right. We haven't been overrun by those units. And it's just an indication, indicator, that, that things often in the development world proceed fairly slowly. At least historically, that has been the case. So I think, again, we have an opportunity to, to engage the community in a very serious and thoughtful conversation. And whether or not we decide, again, we don't have to go the MBTA route, there are some consequences to that, but we can make that decision. But I do think, in the end, we need to address our housing diversity issue. And I hope, I hope that we will do that, one way or the other. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I think I would turn it over to the select board first for questions or comments, and then, then us. And then I see Alan Wilson has his hand up. Is that something, Alan, quickly, you can? Are you muted?
I'm happy to defer to the members of the board and wait.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, thank you, Greg, and thank you, Betsy. Because I keep forgetting, why don't I start with Kathy Blata?
Thanks, thanks, Becky. So I, I really liked the, the visual, the timeline that, you know, Tiffany and Betsy and team put together. I think it articulates well the kind of dual path that we're on. We are looking at all options, which is what happens if we do comply with the zoning, master, MBTA zoning, and what happens if we try not to. My comment, though, is I, I think it would also be wise to assign somebody from the various members, Betsy, that you mentioned, assign a point person to proactively correct any misinformation that is, that can come about when controversial or emotional topics like this come up. And, and the reason I'm making this comment is I really don't feel that the, today's article in the Gloucester Daily Times truly reflects the holistic approach that, that we're taking. It, it made it sound like Manchester's going forward and they're going to change their zoning and everything's a done deal. And that could not be further from the truth. So I'm very concerned about the spread of misinformation. And so I, I'd like the boards here to give that some consideration. Who's going to be the point person to quickly rebut misinformation? Who's going to be responsible for it? Is it, and what venues or channels are they going to use to do that? Because I think our plan is very thoughtful and comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. John Round?
Yeah, I have, it's a very good, very good presentation, Betsy. I've got one question, and that's with regard to our current zoning. And I know that a lot of our current zoning, especially in the general district, probably meets the requirements here. And has there been any news with regard to, to the extent that our current zoning meets the compliance, the requirements of this, of this 48? How much of that will be credited against the 37 acres that they're looking for?
To answer that question, we we would have to go through this working manual that the state has to go through and figure out how much, if any, of the properties meet that requirement. So some of the, 15% or about, no, it's 40%, or about 15 acres of the 37 acres that the town's required to put in place, 15 acres of that would have to be within a half a mile of the downtown. So that would involve basically some number crunching to look at existing single-family houses, existing multifamily houses, to determine if we get close to those percentages of density. So I can't fully answer your question because the work has not been done yet.
Okay, well, I know the minimum is 6,000, I think 6,000 square feet in the general district, and it's all zoned, I think, for three families. And we can have lots up to 8,000 and still fit in within the 15-unit-per-acre size. Once you get lots above 8,000 square feet, now you're dropping below that number. I know that we'll look at it lot by lot to figure out what the story is, but I think all of our hope is that much of our zoning in and around the station may meet the requirements as it stands.
Done? I'm done.
Anne Harrison?
Greg was very careful to say that we allow the conversion of an existing building to three units in the general district. What about new construction? And is that something that the MBTA zoning is going to require?
Betsy?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Yeah, so we don't allow new, we don't allow multifamily homes to be constructed by right in the general district. So that's where
That's the key issue.
we would need to change, potentially, in order to comply.
Okay.
So in other words, is it, is new construction currently allowed?
It's allowed by a special permit. It's not allowed by right.
When you say new construction, that includes expanding existing buildings? Would require a special permit?
To create a multifamily unit, yes. To create a multifamily building, you would need to get a special permit for that.
Brian?
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that we're basically setting the stage to allow for, encourage private development in the town. The town is not required, once we set the zoning up, the town is not required to meet those demands of the MBTA zoning. The question I have is, will the planning board still have design review?
Yes, the answer to that is yes. And I am presently looking at some regulations that would increase boards' control on site plan review. Site plan review cannot be denied, and the conditions need to be reasonable. So there's a lot that can be put in site plan review that presently is not. And everything from drainage to parking to all kinds of stuff. So I, before, within the next two years, if there's a decision to move forward on this zoning, we would need to beef up the site plan requirements.
Because to that point, what I see is the real challenge would be parking. As we increase housing in this area, you still need to find a place to park. I mean, you could, we could double up. We could start putting housing above the retail spaces along Union and Central, but they still need a place to park. So, all right, thank you very much. I'm good.
Let me just clarify that. As I understand, the MBTA concept is that everybody would be using public transportation, so there'd be much fewer cars within that.
Yeah, I'll believe that when I see it. Okay.
I guess one of my biggest concerns, Betsy, and you may have, you likely have better insight, is there's a lot of wiggle room in the state's wording. And in other words, when they say you have to have reasonable reasons, or the town does, in terms of trying to have a little control over what actually gets built. Has the state said whether they are going to actually define these more specifically? And has town council had a chance to look over what the MBTA is asking of our town?
So Greg may want to weigh in on this as well, but my understanding is we're going to start moving into, looking into more detail at the compliance manual. And that compliance manual, we will then sort through a number of questions that we will ask of legal counsel. I am not aware that legal counsel has been intimately involved in this zoning.
I ask because I think it might be helpful to have town council give us guidance in terms of how we were to our benefit, if we can. Greg?
So yeah, state council certainly is following this very closely. They have, KP Law is counsel to hundreds, maybe 150 communities throughout the state. So they have this on their, in their sights to a large degree. And they are following it very closely and trying to ascertain, you know, the nuances of the law. But yes, they certainly will be involved in helping us should we decide to comply, and will be of assistance to us as we work through a whole series of questions.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for the Select Board questions. I have a question before I turn it over to the board. Greg, is this loss of grant, is this a forever thing? Or is it a, have a timeframe? Or do we lose grant money forever, don't comply?
So the way that the statute is currently structured is that it's forever. If you're not in compliance, then you're not eligible.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? If you comply, if we complied in 2026, would we be reinstated, would our eligibility for grants be reinstated? Or do we know?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I'll turn it to the board. Sarah, let's start.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think that we have a real risk of, at this stage, parsing it out into individual issues, that all of which sound challenging. And we should knit them together and see if one issue is a solution to another problem, and not prejudge any of the outcomes yet. You know, if we parse it out into, you know, parking and conversions and resilience and capacity issues and traffic and so forth, then each one of those sounds daunting. But if we put them together. So to that end, I would like to, when I look at the timeline, I think we need a work plan that is clear about roles and responsibilities. And I think we're going to need some sort of a larger charrette where we can spend some time, as opposed to these meetings where we have a half an hour or 45 minutes or whatever it is. And that we need some sort of a facilitated design charrette. And I'd like to see that, that graphic is lovely, but it is very short on the specific actions that we're going to take to get there. And I think it's also very weighted on communications and short on the actual work of the massaging the various options to see if those provide opportunity. And so I'd like to see us, as a next step, really get to a work plan that says how we actually are going to do the work, not of the final product, but the work to get to a final product, I think is a missing piece. And then the other thing that came up at the Select Board meeting the other night that I would really like to see us target a, basically a year from now, as being ready to go to a spring town meeting, maybe not with a whole package, but perhaps with some precursors that are related. Then it gives us the opportunity to refine those or to build on them in a November town meeting. I think one thing that we learned, or I'll say I learned in the last November town meeting, is, you know, we were ready to go in, essentially in June, but it took us still a ton of work to get to November. And the work of just finalizing the language in a zoning change is a time-consuming process, probably not as time-consuming as we made it. But nonetheless, it does take a lot of time to read, to make things correct. So I think the timeline is great, but I think it vastly underestimates the amount of time to get, to understand what the changes are that we might advance, and then to put those into language that becomes zoning. So I would just suggest that we really, Betsy, that you take a hard look at that as a work plan with very specific milestones and roles for who is going to lead those things forward. So I think it's a good first step. And then I also would strongly support, I don't know if we're going to talk about the action plan submission, but strongly support us moving that forward to the January 31 date. Thanks.
Just over.
Thank you, Ron. So my first question is, I've heard the term a few times, "the team", and I'm trying to understand who the team is and who's heading up this project. That wasn't clear.
Betsy, that's a great question.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
So you keep, somebody, there's a few people keep saying "the team", and that there's going to be lots of boards involved and lots of town staff, but I'm not clear on who's heading up this project and who the team is.
Well, I'm the lead. Greg, Sue Beckman, Tiffany are all involved. The various boards, particularly the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board. And we will be drawing on the pedestrian and bike committee, who has transportation expertise. We will also be probably securing a grant to either from MAPC or Mass Housing Partnership for some additional guidance and assistance.
So will you be the one putting the project plan together and then telling what boards, which boards are doing what?
I will be putting a draft together of what the game plan is, and then people will be asked to provide comments and provide some form of indication as to whether they want to work on it or not.
So if I could, Gary and Becky, no, I'm sorry, Ron and Becky.
Greg, did you add, were you saying something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. As I indicated to both boards, my recommendation is that this become a joint project that the Select Board and Planning Board take the lead on, and that you form a special task force to do that. And that task force can comprise the members from Select Board, Planning Board, who would, one of those folks, perhaps you have co-chairs of the task force, one from each board, and that there would be other members from other different boards and committees, and possibly members at large. So that this would be a subcommittee of both Planning Board and Select Board moving forward as a joint project. And as Betsy indicated, staff support would be coming from those four principal people that she named.
So maybe that's my confusion, because I'm not syncing up a task force with the town planner being the lead and then telling the different boards which assignment, so...
The planner is the lead staff person, working for the two boards.
Okay, so we're going to develop a task force. Is that what I'm hearing? Very.
That's my recommendation, but it's up for you to make that decision.
So we'll decide that. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, okay. So so I didn't hear mention, and I think it's important for FinCom to be involved. I think we're going to have to lean on them a lot for impact analysis and... So I'd like to see them involved more. I liked Becky's idea of town council engagement. It would seem to make sense sooner rather than later that it be specific to Manchester and not just that KP Law represents a lot of communities in Massachusetts. But I think it's important for us to get a clear view what their take is for Manchester. I can ask this, Greg, offline of you, but you mentioned that we're losing student population, and I've been actually gathering a lot of numbers on that. And so I'd like to see your numbers as well. My numbers are, we're not losing student population in the district. We're losing students to the school. And I liked Sarah's comments about the specific milestones. I think that's important as part of the project plan. And I'm assuming we'll be going over the action plan after this. So yeah, I think maybe after Laura speaks, we can talk about the next steps.
Thank you. Is that it?
Thank you. I'm excited about the opportunity to look into this issue in an organized way over the next two years. It's great to have a timeline and milestones laid out. And I see at least three kind of takeaways, as I see it, for how this could work. One is this developing compliance and establishing our baseline. It's a great opportunity to be able to do that. I think it's going to be really important to have visuals as well as, you know, quantifying things with the numbers and maybe use examples of areas in town that comply, like the Sawmill Circle comply, or like, let's show some relevant projects to give people a sense. And when you look at the materials that the state puts out, they talk about this missing middle of housing, so it's duplexes, triplexes. It's not, you know, it's not the 40B project with the large apartment-story building. It's really quite smaller scale. So illustrating that for people and really, you know, drawing the circles on the map and showing the parts of town where we really look in a detailed way about where it's complying, where is it, backing up with visuals. I also think because we're going through it at the same time that all of these other towns are going through it, including our surrounding neighboring towns, might be an opportunity for Betsy to check in with her network of town planners in adjacent communities and find out, you know, what they're, how they're organizing it, what are they using for visuals? you know, what they're, how they're organizing it, what are they using for visuals, do we have any precedence? And we have a lot of talent to draw on locally and everybody's going through this, so some sharing knowledge, maybe some visits to neighboring communities to talk would be of interest. So that was number one about defining our baseline. Two for me is, and there are many more issues as Sarah has pointed out, you know, we could dig into all these separately, I think it is really important to bring a cohesive look at them. Climate resiliency is an important consideration, we know that the tracks are vulnerable to future flooding. I think we want to be looking hard at those maps about future climate projections and understanding what they mean. I think when you see blue on a map in future, there's a tendency to think like, oh, maybe this area is underwater all the time, when you might be looking at a, you know, one percent twenty seventy storm, which is a real projection with data behind it. But you can also mitigate those risks, for instance, by putting in a designed flood elevation level that we should be thinking about when we're thinking about housing. And if we're talking about climate change, it doesn't just apply to multifamily housing, it applies to everything in the downtown districts. So if we want to continue to have a habitable downtown and a vibrant downtown and a train that's running, I think the state realizes, I hope they realize that there are a lot of climate issues around the commuter rail and that it needs to, that that having a working transit system is incredibly important to the overall economy of our region. So I think we're not the only ones concerned about that, but I I believe we have to take on faith that we will, the train line is gonna continue to exist, we know that it's vulnerable to flooding and we need to be, this is an opportunity to also look at that issue and think about how we might be able to address it for the town in general. And then the last piece being affordability, I think we have an opportunity here, the state says that we can require certain percentages to be affordable. And I think we do want to encourage a diversity of housing and some of that should be capital A affordable, we're certainly looking to increase that for many reasons. And so it would be a great opportunity, I think, to to look at how we can also encourage or require more affordable housing. This is certainly transit oriented development is a good place to do that because it is naturally suits itself to being somewhat more dense and small audience. I'll leave it at that with those three points, thank you.
Can I make two quick comments?
Excuse me?
Can I make two more quick comments?
I have two.
To Laura's point. I think it's important that different projects, but in tandem that the flood plain, which is my favorite topic for some reason, I don't know why. But the flood plain by law in Overlake District needs to be reviewed along with the town needs to start doing the new five year hazard risk mitigation plan. So all of that plays right into that area downtown, which is at very high risk of flooding. So these two reports need to be done before any decisions can really be data driven decisions. And then with the affordability piece, I was just reading today that DHCD would not balk, balk, at bulk, bulk, at up to twenty percent affordable. So we could try to get that into regulations.
Thanks, Mary. Betsy, you had your hand up.
Before we go to Betsy,
Yes.
I did want to say that regarding the coastal zone management and flooding, that is something that the Select Board has and Greg, we gotta, can speak to this, we did get a very nice grant, or it's not just to us, but in terms of the coastal zone management and flooding and the the changing climate, those already are being looked at. And Betsy's going to speak to this, but she did bring up in a meeting with the state regarding flooding and that the tracks are by the state's own study slated to be underwater by around twenty seventy. And they still want to go forward. Is that right, Betsy?
That is accurate, and in fact, if you look at Salem and Beverly and Manchester's municipal vulnerability plans, all of them indicate that there will not be rain, train service by two thousand and seventy or earlier. In fact, the crossing at Hale Street in Beverly Farms near West Beach is slated to be underwater by much earlier than that. There are areas in Salem, so all of these communities have the same issue that we may not have rail service unless the state is willing to move forward and make some pretty dramatic changes to protection of the tracks. And I mean, think about going into Boston. There's an area on Boardman Avenue that is marshland, there's an area beside Tuck's Point. There's an area by kind of Boardman Avenue where the beach is. There's a number of places in Manchester, there's a number of places in Beverly and a number in Salem that are all prone to sea rise level and flooding. And I don't see anything that the I don't see anything that the state has addressed vis a vis addressing protection of the tracks. So that will continue to be out there in terms of an issue. And the vulnerability plan for Manchester indicates that the area that the train station is in and the Dunkin' Donuts Harrigan's building, that was all filled tidelands. So, you know, that's something that we need to be cognizant of.
Thank you, Betsy. I hadn't intended to take public comments, but Denny Hall, I see you have your hand raised if you could be brief.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
First of all, thanks for.
I'm sorry, Denny, would you state your address as well, please?
Sure, Denny Hall, twenty Madison Road Street. I think part of part of the this process is you need to at least consider what the cost is of noncompliance. And has there been any effort to determine what that might be?
We're just starting.
Okay.
That's part of the plan.
Okay. We in a really perverse way, if we were adopted, if we adopted these guidelines, one of the byproducts would be, in my estimation, that the existing stock of housing, particularly in the one acre, two acre zoning where the average house price today is around eight hundred thousand dollars would be overrun by developers seeking to acquiring that parcel of land and building fifteen acres on a single family house lot. It was here before a single family house lot. So the net net is that a single family house becomes a three story garden, pardon, fifteen moves to the acre. What does that do to the school system? Well, you know, it's all of a sudden the schools are gonna be overrun. And in another perverse byproduct, it would increase the number of units that we would have to build to comply with forty B. So it's 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 not a linear kind of decision that you that you guys are gonna have to make. There's a lot of ancillary issues that come up. And I think it's important to really understand what the cost on compliance is because if you can build, I think, and Betsy, correct me if I'm wrong, ultimately could build five hundred odd units, you've just increased the town's housing units by twenty six percent or thereabouts.
Yeah.
And that that, now we're talking about the change, a change in the character of the town and all those issues that run with it, the school, the traffic, all those kinds of issues. So I'm not advocating that we consider noncompliance. I'm advocating that we consider looking at that as an option, as one of several. Because as, you know, as I've lived here for about forty years. I lived here, I I moved here because of the character of the town. And I'm worried about if we adopt, which are well intentioned considerations, these kinds of provisions, the character of the town will change. And last, the thing that really gets to me is there's there's no provision for affordable housing in this, none. And I just think that's wrong. I mean, that's that's really what we're focused on. That's what we, we want to have diversity of housing. But if the net net is that you're gonna increase the cost of housing for developers who can come in and buy a house for eight hundred thousand dollars and put fifteen units in. And that's not solving the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, yeah, Alan Wilson, are you still around? I don't see him online.
I have to correct, can I correct something?
Sure.
I know we don't want to get too big debate, but I just want to correct something I think that Betsy has said is that first of all, twenty seventy is is around the corner, but it's actually not around the corner. And it's important to know that the that I think Massachusetts has an executive order five sixty nine that requires all state projects that have a state expenditure that they consider climate change, the effects of climate change. I can't imagine the new governor will rescind Governor Baker's executive order five sixty nine. And I know that the capital budget process, and I say this because this is my work area, all capital budgets right now that go to the administration finance office, every single one of them, climate resilience is one of the criteria. So the notion that the state is doing nothing or is unaware, I think, needs to be dispelled. And I think I just, I want to make sure that we we correct that. Certainly, climate resilience is an opportunity to to Laura's point, to take this zoning and make climate resilience improve our climate resilience of our of our vulnerable areas. But the state is definitely doing, well aware, whether they're faster and effective enough, we can debate.
Not to get into a debate
Yeah.
and not to do a lot of back and forth, but I will say that Betsy and I were on the same Zoom as were a few other board members. And and she brought that up to them.
Right, the DHCD, yeah, I agree.
And they said, you know, that that we still want to go forward like this, so that's it, done.
Okay, any further discussion on this? I think the next item I wanted to just bring up is the application form. Betsy, tell me if this is correct document.
I had a hard time reading some of the things on that.
So just to clarify, the state only gives you either a PDF or they give you a document that you have to fill in online. So I basically made a copy of the PDF and I filled in as best I could the responses to the questions.
So have all members been able to read the document that was in the meeting package, Ms. Hall?
Yes, but to Becky's point, there were many that I could not read even with full Zoom. So maybe the ones that have descriptive writing on it, maybe if we could go over those.
Why section three?
Yeah, it's gonna start on page. We have questions on page four, but I don't know if you want to do a page by page, but yeah, page five and five is mostly.
Is that section three?
Yes.
Page five?
Sort of in the middle.
So do you want to go in order or do you want to go? I just have some questions.
Does anyone else have questions? I would defer to you, Mary.
I would say it's a fun application. If one dot four, then do three point dot five and, yeah. I have some trouble with the handwriting in places and it might be useful.
So Betsy.
So do you want me to walk walk everybody through it?
Yeah, let's start with I've got it up on screen.
So page, page one, it's one point one is Manchester by the Sea. One point two is, it's a commuter rail. One point three, multifamily unit capacity requirement is fifteen units an acre. One point four, does the municipality have an MBTA rapid transit station? No.
Oh, right.
That's subway.
So one point five, municipality have an MBTA commuter rail station? Yes. One point six, does this community have any other MBTA transit stations that are located outside of its municipal boundaries that may have developable station area? No. One point seven, Elizabeth Ware, one point seven A interim town planner, basically one point seven is all all my contact information. One point eight, form reviewed, briefly describe other members of the core team. So I'm saying the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, I can add additional information. But I figured that's the baseline. Housing overview, two point one. Does the municipality have any established housing related goals? Yes. One point two, one point, two point one A. The housing production plan and the master plan provide promote diversity in housing stock, affordable units and senior housing. Two point two.
Hold on, Betsy, Mary has a question on that.
So
Okay.
I just have a question with two point one A and then I guess two point two A. Since senior housing is not relevant to this, I'm wondering why it's listed.
Senior housing is not relevant?
It it can't be designated, this MBTA multifamily housing cannot be designated senior, it has to be family.
Right, that's true, however, you can make one unit, one bedroom units that in all likelihood you're gonna get a person of a small household in and in all likely, you're gonna get a fairly, it's it's promising that you would get people in larger houses who wanted to downsize.
But you can't do that, you can't limit number of bedrooms.
No, but you can have a limit.
Well, what they have stated is they want a diversity of one, two, three and four bedroom units.
I think also that they are asking for what our housing overview is. And we do have goals and and while they're not specifically limiting the housing, part of our housing goals do include the senior housing.
And I agree, I just, I mean, when it, to me, when it says any relevant strategies, senior housing doesn't fit into that, but I will currently.
I think some of the, I think some of the work at the Plains, New Haven Park, the Plains expansion, senior housing.
No, I know, but that's not multifamily housing, that's not MBTA multifamily.
But it's town, this is so, that has been done to relevant strategies, it's relevant, I think. It's housing work.
It's also senior with a capital S housing and senior housing as.
It's also senior with a capital S, housing and senior housing as in smaller size housing that's appropriate for seniors and others wishing they were smaller.
I get what you're saying, Mary. I just think that what they're getting, our overview as a town. And, but I do see what you mean in terms of relevant and how what we have actually applies to what it is the state is looking for.
Yep, I had the same, a similar comment on two point two A, which is to more fully flush out some of the work of the Affordable Housing Trust in that response. I don't know how many characters you get, so. That's how, that's.
In two point two or two point?
Two point two A.
Okay, okay, so what do you want me to add to that?
I think you could flush it out with the description of the Affordable Housing Trust work.
Okay.
In addition to the fact that the planning board has, you know, drafted proposed zoning changes already. They've proposed, they haven't, you know.
Okay.
I agree, I think that that's critical to put in there.
Okay, thank you. So section three, three points, three point one. An existing zoning district or district that already complies with section 3A guidelines. Potentially, I guess one of my questions is, the question came up earlier about parking. And right now, the requirement is if you have three units on a six thousand square foot lot, you have to provide five parking spaces. Otherwise, you have to get zoning relief, so that's not by right. So if you can put those parking spaces on the lot, then we're good to go. But if you can't, that's potentially a not by right situation. So I've put it in there as we believe that some of the units comply. And existing zoning district that must be amended, that's also, if we were to address parking, then we would have to put some kind of clause in there saying if you're within a half mile of a train station, you may get relief from parking. That's obviously a decision that will have to be made down the pike. So. So additional zoning strategy, I did put in senior housing. I can also add affordable housing, if that's something you want me to add.
I don't see any way to add a comment there.
Yeah, I think they're asking for comments, just check the box.
It seems like we've got A, B and E recovered.
Okay. And briefly describe the possible compliant districts. And I said the general zoning district allows three units per six thousand square feet and permits four units by special permit. So obviously, the special permit is not something they want to allow. So.
Should this clarify that the general district allows conversion to three units?
Yeah. Okay, that's clarified.
Betsy, can I ask a clarifying question? By six thousand square feet, you mean parcel size or lot size?
Lots, yeah, the lot size is six thousand.
Could we just qualify that so we know we're talking about lot size and not structure size?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so three, one B, select changes that may be necessary for the existing district to comply. As I mentioned earlier, dimensional regulations, parking regulations. And I do say conversion of existing buildings to multifamily units.
What are the dimensional requirements? Or which one, or what we just read?
Three, one, E.
Yeah. We've talked about the parking requirements, we've talked about conversion of existing buildings, but is there something in the dimensional requirements, regulations that are, that's a problem, that's an issue?
You probably, if somebody were going to be putting three units on six thousand square feet, you'd probably have to look at setbacks a little bit. I don't know how many people have converted their existing units, their existing dwellings to three units on a six thousand square foot lot. I started looking at a bit of the town center and quite frankly, there's a lot of lots that are three thousand, four thousand square feet that have houses on them. So obviously, those would not trigger, but I haven't gotten into the six thousand square foot lots yet.
Sarah Melish, you have a comment on this, you can just identify yourself.
Yes, my concern is that seventy-five percent of our lots are nonconforming. And if they're less than six thousand square feet, they don't come in this equation because it's not by right.
Right. Sarah, are you, are you speaking as chair of ZBA or resident? Just for clarification.
I'm happy to speak as a resident, Sarah Melish, 11 Venice Street.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Sorry.
Betsy, any comments to Sarah's point? Nonconforming.
No, she's correct, there's a lot of nonconformity in the center of town. So that's what this, this review would be of the existing, of the state's manual and just to see what complies, what doesn't. And so, but she's correct that there's a number of units that are in noncompliance.
So is that to say that nonconformance is not, cannot prevent the by right, right? All of those lots that are nonconforming, if we want to include them in our footprint of however many acres we've got to have here, those nonconforming lots have to be rezoned as conforming or something, even though they're only three or four thousand square feet, otherwise you can't do something by right.
Well, one of the things we could do is you could have, you could buy two lots and join them and then have some, you would have by right zoning.
If that were allowed by the town.
Well, we get people who join lots all the time. I mean, so it is, I don't know, it's an important question among the questions.
It's pretty critical because when you go in with your application, you've got to say, you're the lots and everything works out at fifteen per acre or more. And you're going to have lots like that.
I think that's one of the questions Denny Hall had, his point was to that.
I don't know that we can answer these now, this is the application to say these are the things I'm looking at. Our historic downtown doesn't conform to zoning because it was built before zoning. That's the character people love and that we're trying to preserve. So I think we just have to go through the process to see what, you know, makes sense.
I just brought this up because I didn't understand the issue, now I do.
I'm sorry, Anne, I wasn't intending to, I was just sort of carrying on to the conversation. I do have a question about the use schedule. Should we be including that if a new construction use is not currently allowed and would be allowed, if we elected to allow it under the compliance route? Do we need to check that box also? For instance, in the general district, maybe we're not allowing this use of a new construction multifamily unit? That question's to Betsy.
Betsy, on checking the use box, use schedule box?
Yes, we should check it.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. What about district boundaries? You could make an argument that if you change the general district, expanded the general, just as an example, if you were to expand the general district, that that would be one strategy that could work. And does district boundaries, would that also include overlay district? So that might.
I think it would include an overlay district.
Yeah, so it seems to me an overlay might be an option as well.
Right.
So we'll check in all the boxes.
Well, it keeps our options open.
That's right.
So you'd have to make a, an explanation for. No, okay, just for those, okay, gotcha. Moving along, Betsy, on three point one E. Are you muted? She's contemplating.
So what I did was, the three point one E, I included the senior housing in the form of new cluster units. I had also talked with Greg at one point about, and this is something I haven't talked about with the planning board, but keeping the option open of taking a large estate that may be for sale and converting that into units of some type.
And that's actually been talked about before, yeah.
Yeah, when I was in Ipswich, I drafted a bylaw for great estates bylaw. And that would have allowed some of the large estates in Ipswich that were having a hard time being sold to be converted into units. So Ipswich has a huge number of big estates, so. Unfortunately, that bylaw was changed recently to include some industrial for kind of biotech uses and now it's run into some real problems, so. But that's something that the planning board or the board of selectmen could consider over the next couple of years.
I've got a question about the historic district that was mentioned a couple of minutes ago. There are a number of houses in the historic district that are two-family and even three-family, and that's not a problem. The rules as they're written right now are mostly concerned about the appearance of the building from the street and outside, and in particular, the facade facing the street. If somebody wants to change the inside of a house and make it from two-family to three-family, they have the right to do that. That becomes a site plan review issue, I think, or would the state look at it that way?
So I thought at least in three point two, we at least put historic district as one of the non-housing characteristics that we list, so we can, to reflect that.
Right, okay.
And I would specify, you say street creek canopy, I would say, I think we're like, aren't we a?
Tree city.
Tree city. Also, here I would add flood mitigation and coastal resilience as well as maybe parking. I think it's important, I think this section is really important for, if you sort of collect all the issues people have raised around the table and reflect them here, then when people look at this, if they see it, then they say, oh yes, they've thought, they understand that these things. The other one is, I don't know, is it saying there the commercial, street level, commercial business?
Says retail with upper story residential.
Okay, great, yeah, retail, that's good.
We could also add design standards. We've been talking about, we've been talking about historic, sort of historic district and we've been talking about flood design standards, resiliency standards. But we could develop design standards that would govern the massing, the setback, the scale.
The community character.
Community character, but maybe we just want to flush that out with, you know, adding design standards as a potential issue to look at.
Sure.
And that's where I want to do some serious parsing out of what, when they say, you can't place onerous restrictions.
On the site plan review, but I think if you set the design standards in place and then you comply with those, the site plan review, like any site plan review cannot, you know, block the development from happening.
So getting back to a comment made about historic districts and taking a historic building and changing it from two units to three units, you've got building code issues with second means of egress for all these units. So you may be required to put in additional doors to the outside, things like that, that are oftentimes visible from the street. So just keep that in mind.
But I, I don't know if we could add this to three point two, but one of the non-housing characteristics is of concern that the DA is maintaining the, in the general district, the commercial and residential. I think if, to other people's points, if developers say, oh, I can build fifteen houses, let's just take down the stores and build the houses because that's more profitable to them. I don't know what we can do to say we need that balance of commercial and residential.
Maybe they could strengthen that commercial downtown, street level, commercial.
Vibrancy.
Vibrancy or something like that.
Okay.
So moving on, Betsy with the timeline.
So the timeline, I basically tried to take the timeline that we talked about and put that into the tasks, the start date and the end date. So it should pretty much mirror, might not be exactly mirror, but aiming to look at things over the next year and a half and look at spring town meeting, spring twenty twenty-four town meeting or fall twenty twenty-four town meeting. It does not address if we decide not to be compliant.
Yeah, I think to Sarah's point, we're not going to get this done by spring town meeting, I don't think. But I would think to plan on these eleven, these dates in November.
I think I'd change legislative sessions to town meeting because our legislative session in town is a town meeting.
Anne, did you want to say something?
I guess, if I understand correctly, if we don't.
Have everybody review this and send their comment.
I, who's talking?
There's talking.
What are you looking for?
Find out, I'm not.
Put new batteries in the.
It's probably somewhere in here.
No, well, I brought it out there to change the race this morning. And I think I brought, certainly not here.
Is that Axel?
Are you sure you don't have?
I think that was Axel.
It is Axel.
There we go, okay, yep, all right. And it's all yours.
My concern is the longer we take to get this in front of the town, the more chance we have of running into misunderstandings and confusion. And I think we would be well advised to at least have a second opportunity to come back if the first time. if, if the first time doesn't go sailing through town meeting. And that's why I would like to see this done for the spring.
Yeah, or at least really-
No, done so we can vote on it.
Okay.
Not close, approximate, but.
I'm just going by the feedback we got from our recodification from that we didn't have enough time and nothing was explained, so I was just going by that.
Yeah, but if you go right-
We can get them packaged out by April, I'm fine with that.
It just, one year from now. If we get, if we get to-
A little later.
It goes past.
If we get to November and-
Yeah, understood.
Then we lose our grants.
Understood.
Laura? Sorry, Laura had me.
I was gonna just suggest that we start with the November 2023 meeting and figure three town meetings. It's not a vote in November 2023, but it's an update and it's an information session and give people time to kind of march through. Because we'll have forums and all the rest, but this is a way we can get to a lot of people with informational, you know, we're coming back next time with a vote and then we still got the backup plan of the fall, November 2024, we think we need it. But if we set those three, maybe that's the best route for voting.
One other, we've been talking, there has been mention of design standards and resiliency standards. I assume that these are all things that have to be in the zoning or in the, and have to be brought to town meeting before we are in a position to accept the zoning changes so that we have the ground prepared.
I think they could be concurrent or, or they could precede.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, no. No, it, it could be done as part of a, a new district or an overlay district that allows, I mean, I don't know, I think there are lots of boys to do it.
Mary, you want to answer?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm just trying to understand, and maybe Anne you can answer, when you're, you want to have the opportunity to bring this to town meeting potentially twice if it doesn't go through the first time, what do you think will change? If it was a negative vote, what would change from one town meeting to the next? Because the data that we gather will be the same, so I'm just curious what the, what the reasoning is.
My reasoning- is, is that we will have a second chance to try to, if we've decided that this is the direction we want to go, we'll have a second chance to try to clarify whatever misapprehensions.
I also think we could change, let's say we, you know, we have an overlay district that includes this part of town and that is the, clearly the objectionable piece. We can say, okay, let's not have to be this part of town, let's have it be this part of town.
Wouldn't we know that through the forums and through the-
I think the forum, then the, the definitive legislative body is the town meeting. And so I think you get a lot of very vocal voices that object to an option. And until you bring it forward, it's hard to know what the legislative body knows, so.
Sarah has her hand up.
I think that's residual.
Oh, well, Sarah Malisch, did you want to say something, or?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanted to remind people that 75% of lots in Manchester are non-conforming. And by right, in the general district with three-family homes require a conforming lot. Therefore, you may need to change the zoning to allow the three-family homes by right are non-conforming.
Yep, yep.
Or you don't need it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, Mary, or did you say, Laura, sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Anne's question about needing the flood or climate standards and the design standards. My thinking is we need the design standards that relate specifically to this use that would govern massing, setback, architectural things. But the flood standards or the climate standards, I think, doesn't really matter if it's multifamily or single family. We've already got a district, and so they should apply to all uses. And so we may, and that's also going to be a challenging, difficult thing to weave our way through. So I think it's one option to consider just moving those along at their same, at their own rate for a climate. And they will apply to multifamily housing, same as they'll apply to any other use. So they don't necessarily need to be in place, you know, with or before this use. I think climate resiliency applies to anything that we want to do if we want to have a downtown that is still viable 2027.
Okay, I think-
Quite, just a question, I, I just want to follow up on, on Mary's comment a few minutes or so ago. You, you focused on November of 2023 for kind of a presentation, shall we say, a town meeting? I mean, there's not going to be any vote then, but I, I am a believer that you can run a lot of forums, but frankly, it's not going to be anything like a forum that you get a town meeting. You're going to get more attention there than it will everything else combined.
Right.
And if you're going to get some, well, I wouldn't call it bad news, but let's just say different news that surprises you.
Feedback.
I think that's a good venue to do that. We're not voting on anything, I just want to know how many people don't understand what's going on, how many people really object to what's going on, and they want to do something else, but you, you have to get that. I think it's a good venue.
Can you do that at town meeting and not hold on something?
Yeah, can you put that on as, it's, it's not a warrant article per se, or is it? I don't know.
And there's not much business on the November meeting, or at least on budgets.
Ellen has objected in the past to having articles, items on the town meeting warrant that are not for a vote.
But you could have a town, you could have an in-for session from six to seven, and the town meeting starts at seven.
Well, that's nice.
So there are ways to, to do it.
All right.
That's right.
Need to change.
We'll have a meeting instead of sound waves.
But I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I really do.
Before we go off, I would just like to ask if Kathy Balata would like to weigh in. Since I inadvertently-
Thank you for reaching out, Becky Noah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
She's doing laundry right now.
So I, I, since we're not meeting, uh, before this is due, I'd like to move this form forward tonight.
So I'll make a motion to authorize Betsy Ware to, and Greg Futterfield, to file the in, interest form or whatever this is.
Action plan.
Action plan, thank you. Taking into account the feedback received tonight on behalf of a town.
You're second, I-
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Cusman?
Yes.
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 Chair votes, yes.
And roll call vote, this-
We do have a meeting.
Is that it?
We have, do have a meeting before this has to be turned in.
We do.
Okay, so you can get the final review.
Okay.
The final say. Okay, I think that's all we wanted to cover from the joint meetings. We can release our town founders.
We didn't discuss task force.
The task force, I didn't think we were going to appoint tonight. Greg, what was your thoughts on the task force? Do you want to move on that? Does that happen?
If, if that's a structure you think is, is the way you want to go, that would be helpful to hear. You, you can take, take another meeting to decide who, who you want to appoint from each board to sort of be the lead.
I'm thinking it's too fulbert.
It would be helpful if you think, it would be helpful that five-minute discussion-
She hasn't, she hasn't been sworn in yet.
She might want to just mail it in right now.
What's the pleasure of the board to hold this up split, or you want to discuss it? Like the idea, don't like the idea?
I think in this situation, in my opinion, in this situation is probably the only way to go if it's multiple boards doing this type of project. And I will nominate myself to be on that task force.
I think, wasn't the question whether we want to decide it tonight or whether we want to decide it? We don't have a full board, so we might want to think about who.
I, that's, that's how I feel, is I think that we, you know, we do, as you said, we have another meeting. I think if we decide collectively that it's a good idea to do a task force, we can decide what we think is a logical composition. I, I think you don't want it to be too many people involved because boards and committees will be able to submit information and, and keep the task force to a reasonable-
Maybe Betsy and Greg could come up with a com, a proposed composition-
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And acknowledge that Mary is interested in certainly.
So Greg, we're interested, the planning board is interested in moving forward with a task force. Sounds like, like consensus. Lauren?
I have a question.
Thank you, that's helpful.
So it's Planning Board, Select Board, and at-large representatives?
I don't think the composition has been, I, that's what Betsy and Greg, I think, can put forward to the two boards, and then the two boards can say, yes, we find that a good proposed makeup where we feel it should be modified, and if so, how.
I'm wondering if it would make sense, since this is going to be a two-year sustained effort with a lot of deep dive, would it make sense to have two members from every board? So you got some, you know, backup if you can't make one, and also so that there's just more voices, more, more years listening and, and then probably similar, same, same number of open, you know, on, at-large members as well, so that things are evenly weighted.
May I make a suggestion that members of Planning Board and Select Board, if you have thoughts, email them to Greg and Betsy as to how you, what you feel the composition would be most beneficial, and that way they can-
I'd also be curious to know how other towns are handling it. So that would be helpful to know how the other towns are handling this.
Yeah, that's a good point.
To that point, excuse me, Laura had mentioned, I, I think that we ought to take a look at the potential of a regional approach as well. Okay, Cape Town is, is unique, I think. And I think that the more we can lean on each other and come up with a, a uniform approach perhaps, I mean, as best we can, it's something that's worthwhile, and I think that I'd, I'd ask if Betsy really reviewed that.
Well, for example, resilient standards could be shared, they're, they, they're not specific necessarily to resilience, you know, one, and they're, they exist out there, right?
I'm very sure that the town, you know, Lowell, I mean, your BTA doesn't have to worry about too much.
To these friends.
Title, title of surge.
Maybe not title, yeah. The Lowell, I just talked to somebody, Lowell, the river, sometimes floods right into a facility I was talking about today, yeah.
Yeah, and also I think there's a resiliency, and then there is just the way our towns on Cape Town and North Shore have developed around, you know, core, dense, denser downtown cores, historic villages who happen to be around train lines, and we've all gotten interested in kind of preserving that, that special character about Cape Town and North Shore. So taking some kind of regional approach, and if we're just learning from each other and sharing lessons learned, I think would be great. Maybe the town planners can lead that effort, talk among themselves as they get started. Maybe there's a regular meeting that's happening among the town planners to share information, and they report it back to the, to the task force and the boards.
Certainly.
Okay, all under advisement, all good ideas.
Okay, with that said, may I have a motion to adjourn the Select Board portion of the meeting?
Second.
Okay, move Brian Solis, seconded by John Round, roll call vote, Kathy Balata.
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solis?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Thank you to everybody who attended this evening, and that's a wrap.
Some of you.
Enjoy meeting with you guys.
Thank you, thank you all very much for a nice collaborative evening, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The short members here is by significant, I don't want to do too much politics in these, or voting tonight, but I think we'll take a few of these items moving forward. I think some of them are pretty benign, so. The next item I have is the Board of Health proposed regulation comments that were distilled by Betsy Ware. She distilled our comments into a single document that I'd like to send on to the Board of Health. I'd like to send it underwritten as they were attributed, that each member's comments were attributed. Any thoughts on that?
I just thought that some of the comments were, um, unprofessional, unprofessional, and I don't think it reflected well on the board. So I guess I had hoped that we would distill them as to a collective set of issues, rather than try to attribute, I mean, so that, I, I just feel like there are some core issues that were echoed, and we should just summarize those and not attribute them and get rid of the, what I consider to be, there are some, some, some unprofessional responses, and I think that the board does not need to propagate that. So I'm, I'm sorry, Betsy, because I know it took some work, but can you, is, you know, a one or two-page memo that just summarizes the issues, because they kind of repeated over and over, and I think you put them in good groups of comments, just kind of, that would be my suggestion. I don't, I just feel the board does not need to prop, to, to, I, I already said that, to, to be mean.
Agreed.
Okay.
So.
So, Betsy, can you re-review them and kind of consolidate the ones that are similarly themed, and?
I can, I, everybody put forth their ideas and everybody did it in a slightly different way, which is why I kind of grouped things and then, and kind of kept all the comments. I'm more than happy to redraft with kind of the, the groupings and pre-drafted into a two-to-three-page memo. Does the board need to do a total review of it again, or how do you want to deal with that?
I'm comfortable with you doing that personally, I think that's fine.
Mary?
I emailed the town planner and the interim town planner and the town administrator again this morning that, just like at last meeting, it is against open meeting law to consolidate comments, distribute to the board, and not post to the public. So I think this is the fourth time I've brought it up, and I don't know what's going to help change this process. I guess open meeting law violations, but, so I have no comments on this because it's, it's in violation.
I thought we could send comments to a neutral source and then have them up for discussion.
As long as they're posted with the meeting agenda.
You mean all the comments?
The consolidated document, yes.
Ron, if I can?
Go ahead, Greg.
So the, the problem is if you share the comments amongst yourselves prior to the meeting, if you're going to share the comments amongst yourselves, then that document needs to be available to the public.
Which we did not do.
So that's, that's the, that's the issue, so if, sure, going forward, that if you're going to have comments compiled, either wait until the meeting itself before you share those compiled comments, or if you want to get those comments to the members ahead of time, make sure that they're available to the public ahead of time. Well, it's, it's, it's not an onerous requirement, but it's something that should be followed.
So I think the question Mary's asking us that we struggled with is, how do we get our packet available to the public and advance?
I think I answered that question to Mary, and I'll, I think I answered it online here in the chat that starting in February, we will scan everything that's on SharePoint for a specific meeting, and we will post it as the Board of Selectmen do.
Right, thanks.
And that's something that if Gail doesn't have the time to do, I will do it. But this is the way the board has operated for quite a number of years. But this is the way the board has operated for quite a number of years. I certainly agree with Mary that things should be open and transparent and that information should be available to the public and so that's what I'm willing to do.
So the documents are already scanned because they're in our meeting packet. All you really need to do is copy them to a neutral site, I guess, is that a public site, is that correct?
What I would do is copy them into a paper copy and scan them and put them on, have the town clerk put them online.
They already are electronically available if they're in our meeting packet. I would think you can just move them over, but okay, whatever, I don't think you need to do that paper interface.
Well, I will call whenever the roll call is done.
Okay.
And I will talk with Mission Control, Debbie Powers, who will advise me on this.
Okay, so back to the Board of Health. So if you're going to put them up to the public, I still think we can have Betsy distill them into themes. Am I incorrect in that?
As long as it's posted to the public.
Okay, as long as, and we're not meeting on this till February.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, so that time, that'll be in place, so.
So is it okay if we have Betsy distill them and then send them off to the Board of Health and just put it in our packet for us and the public for the next meeting?
Well, do we want, do we want to look at her editorial?
We had a discussion about it at a public meeting where it's in violation. My concern is, I've brought this up over the years, at least a half dozen times, and nobody seems to, I don't know what the word is, care. So, yeah, you know, it's, we can't continue to do business as usual like this when it's in violation.
Well, I think we have a plan to do that.
We have a plan, correct.
So I guess we'll get the consolidated motion memo at the next meeting and.
All right, we'll move it forward to the thirteenth, February.
So we're gonna review it there and then send it to the Board of Health, is that a thought?
Okay.
So wait a minute, I need clarification. You want me to consolidate and then put it in your February thirteenth packages? Or consolidate, have the chair look at it and then ship it out, which one, how about that?
I think we're gonna discuss it on the thirteenth, I think that's the point.
Okay.
Discuss what you've put together, hopefully pulling out all the personal.
Okay.
Okay, so before we get into the work plan, Sarah, is that gonna be?
Brief.
It is gonna be brief?
I think.
Okay. This is, next item is the proposed work plan for Springtown meeting, the zoning changes that we would like to, well, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Sarah Craig.
So at the last meeting, we talked about a work plan for moving forward with what zoning we might propose to town meeting. And so I revised the very short compressed calendar, which basically is to have a working session on the 30th of January, which is the Monday, the fifth Monday of January. Post for a public hearing on the first of February and hold a public hearing on the 27th of February. And I talked briefly with, basically took the input we had at the last meeting and got Mary's input as well and just, or what she emailed about floodplain. So I suggest that we take up the following in, for, to move to a public hearing and then, on February 27th, and then decide which we move to the warrant. So those are two steps. The first is the administrative changes, which was the November, Article Number Nine, Section Twelve. Adult entertainment, the Article Eleven from November. The very, the minor changes to existing ADU bylaws to remove the double lot and the 1984 requirements. That was Article Fifteen in November. And Article Sixteen, which was to add family dwelling unit to the allowed accessory, accessory use is the wrong word.
And for.
Yeah, it's accessory.
Well, it's not called, it's not subject to 9.1, so it's not, it's a family dwelling quarters for employees in a outbuilding. It's an amendment to Section Four. And then senior housing, the Article Thirteen from November. And my proposal is to include that in the public hearing for November 27th. And I put that on the list because I know it's very, something that Chris really would like to see move forward. And Mary had suggested floodplain. So that's, seems like a lot in terms of number, but if you think about numbers, the administrative changes and adult entertainment, I think will be short on a town meeting floor. And once we hear from the public in a public hearing, whether the ADU and the family dwelling unit should move forward and then whether senior housing and floodplain should move forward, we can decide after we hear them in a public hearing. So in order to get that done, I suggest any new content be presented to us without discussion at our January 23rd meeting. We have a retreat, but at least as two weeks from today to propose the content of anything new, maybe something else if it's not on this list. And then have a working session dedicated to these topics or any other new ones. I think on the 30th, and we would take it in the same format we took them previously, which is motions on the material that we would have available on the 23rd. So I'm happy to put together the, all of the material on the, what's listed here is one through five. Administrative adult entertainment, ADU minor changes, family dwelling unit, and senior housing. I think we have them pretty much together. And I, for example, have a idea of a motion to amend the administrative changes to add an alternate member for site plan review, which is allowed by state law. I'd like to just see us debate, discuss that on January 30th, for example. So I would, I would come with a motion to amend that section. That's a new content, but I would have it for you on the 23rd so we could look at it. That's my proposal in terms of, it sounds like it's really fast, but it turns out when you work backwards from April 3rd to a warrant on either the March 1st or March 6th, I think Greg had said March 1st, you have to have a public hearing on the 27th if our public hearing gives us input about what people want to hear. And it has to be posted on February 1st, so.
Thank you, Sarah. I see two hands up. I'll put stake board comments first, Ms. Foley, you look like you have your hand up.
I don't know how, but.
I can just tell.
Past experience. Thank you for doing this, Sarah. I think the first four seem quite minor, so that's good. I think if we were to move senior housing forward, we would have to listen to what was clearly stated at town meeting that people want more information, more detail, more graphics, more real-life scenarios. So I'm fearful that we're again wedging something in that doesn't fit. So we're not doing anything different this time than we did the first time and residents were very clear, and especially with something as complex as senior housing, that they needed and wanted more, so.
I guess I would disagree, we never took up senior housing to know what anybody thought about it.
I'm saying with the ones that we even, with the ADUs, which in my opinion is more minor than senior housing, that we've received emails and again, it was at town meeting that residents got up and spoke that things weren't clear, they needed more information, they needed more graphics, they needed more, you know, impact studies, things like that. So I still don't think that the Planning Board, in my opinion, is doing what we should be doing to provide that. So I would take senior housing off until we're able to do those types of studies.
Well, I'd suggest that, given my timeline, that we take up those, whether with on or off on January 30th. My proposal here is really just a work plan.
Good, Mary.
Thank you for the work plans, Sarah. And I think the only one missing here is the cluster development, which we also know we need to get back to. So this is almost a bolus, but not quite, and now we're adding some new zoning, which is also very much needed, which is the floodplains. So I think at the next meeting, we should decide.
We can add, put cluster on it.
I think we should just put cluster on it to list the ones that we know are still open as we start to add new to it. And then maybe we talk about, you know, what do we want to take on now and what do we, we have a parking lot. You know, the ones that we need, know we need to come back to and need to be developed. We have a lot to do in this next few years with the MBTA zoning and climate resiliency and so forth. So keeping a running list of the parking lots may be the way to go.
I'm happy to put cluster on and just, again, similarly take it up on the 30th. The thought that I had was by having a public hearing, it doesn't obligate us to put it on the warrant and we don't know what's on the warrant and the warrant is actually the Select Boards. So we could put forward two proposed articles or 22 and the Select Board may say, you only get one slot. So we kind of have to negotiate with them, but you can't have any slots if we haven't had a public hearing.
Right.
So maybe let's add cluster to the, I'm happy to put that on the agenda for the 30th.
I'm sorry, I chucked the floor because I had my hand up for that very reason and put it down.
Is there anybody, the only piece that's not on this is the 9.1 revision, which is the 900 square feet ADU by right and so forth. And it was, I'll say my opinion, which is I don't think we're ready to take that one up again.
Well, non-conforming is not on here either.
What?
Not on the right, non-conforming.
A non-conforming, right, I just feel like they take too much time. They have, they're too complex to try to take and would.
During a full meeting.
During a.
I don't disagree, I think that's the reason for having the parking lot.
Right.
So we can identify those issues. I know there are more, the topography section is one that I'd really like to come back to, I don't think we're very well protected there.
Yep.
So there are others.
Maybe I'll make a parking lot.
Where did I see a list, somebody had like blasting and was that Betsy, did I see that list?
It was on Betsy's memo, yeah.
So I've got two hands up, Sarah Melish and Betsy, and someone in the audience. Okay, let's start with Sarah Melish.
Yeah, I wish to raise a process issue. In February of 2021, oh, I think, or 2022, there was a public hearing regarding various changes to the zoning bylaws. And some of those were not acted on at the town meeting, but I'm not sure that the proper process had been, has been taken to remove those off the list. So my understanding is the ZBA is still not able to hear any applications for which those zoning bylaws are different from the existing bylaws.
Right, I think, is Greg still on?
Another process that needs.
Greg is still on, yes.
I think they have expired.
I think, yeah, I think there was.
I think the time has expired on that, Sarah, because it's gone over the.
I don't think there's a time expiration.
No, I think there is, because we couldn't bring them to town meeting if town meeting was tomorrow because our public hearing was more than, maybe Betsy, Greg, are you, can you answer that question? That's really important.
Yeah, I believe it's six months.
Six months.
Within, the public hearing has to be within six months of the.
No, but they had this, the public hearing and they had a town meeting and did they resolve the issues at the town meeting or not?
On what particular?
They were passed over.
They were passed over.
I think if you decide not to go forward on it, it's moot.
So if they're passed over, it's okay?
I believe so. I will, I will double check that and if necessary, we'll consult the council. But I'm pretty sure that if it doesn't go forward at the town meeting, it's a moot point.
Thank you.
And the hearing was May 27th, I think, May 17th.
Well, it was May and it was November and who knows what else.
That actually brings up a question because at town meeting, the town moderator said we can pass over as long as we set a date.
No, we table, you just set a date.
The table.
Pass over, take no action.
Pass over, take no action, okay.
If you table it, you have to table it to a date certain.
Okay. Pass.
Okay, Betsy, did you have a question on or comment?
So I had something, so in my Planning Board memo, in regard to the work plan for Springtown meeting, the alternate members can only be used for special permit voting, not site plan voting.
Okay, great.
There's nothing in Mass General Law, I checked this out, in Mass General Law, I checked this out with a number of my peers and it's only alternate members for site plan review, for special permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just say why I want to do that and that is because we have a big special permit coming up. What? Self-stigling. And if something happens to two members, you know, we're hamstrung. Somebody, you know, people get sick or have, you know, calamities or move out of town or quit or whatever. So it just protects us and protects our constituents, any of our, not just big, big special permits or little special permits.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Did you have a comment? Then sure, you can identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Marty Flood, I live on Hickory Hill Road. I had sent a letter to the board about doing an open forum for some of the articles that were set aside in November and I hadn't heard back. And I see that there are some plans now that Ms. Creighton is saying that we might not revisit a few of the articles.
Right, we're gonna pass over some of them again, the most, the two, it sounds like. We'll figure out which ones we're doing and then we'll have a public hearing.
And what is, is there a forum to come in and ask questions about those articles in kind of a more matter-of-fact way, maybe not like tonight and certainly not a town meeting, but I think there was hundreds of people that didn't really understand the articles. No matter what you guys think happened, most of the people that I talked to after that town meeting that saw me get up and talk about the article that was off by, you know, we lost by two votes, I'd say we decided that I should have voted for. Long story, I voted incorrectly, I voted affirmative for that vote, that would have been a tie vote, by the way.
So we did hold a forum with, where people could come in and we had all these storyboards and talk to Planning Board members and get questions answered and.
And how many people came to that?
I'd say 20.
We did a mailing to every postal customer telling them where it was and when it was.
Okay.
So we did that and there was.
Okay.
But we.
Great, and so for the articles that are going forward this year, will there be another forum meeting? Will there be enough time to talk about the articles that are being proposed? Because most of the people still did not know what was going on. I think it's irrelevant that there was a forum and people didn't come. I think there were 600 people almost at this town meeting and I would say hundreds didn't really realize what was going on with the ADUs, with the townhomes, with the clusters, with all those things. They didn't, that's undeniable, I think. I think there has to be, you need to do a better job as a whole, the Planning Board, to get the information out there and plain talk so people can make a decision on it either way.
That's right.
I've learned a lot from reading the planning articles. I went through this three times and I learned a lot about what could, what could and could not be done. And I was surprised because that's not the things that I was told, you know, in talking to people and reading in the paper and so forth. It's a little bit more than I think that most people really knew. So I really want to make sure that you do have a forum with plenty of time and plenty of outreach to people so they can come in there and ask questions about the articles that are going forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I just would like to ask, I know that having been involved for many years now in town, both living here as well as on boards and committees, we have wrestled with trying. We have wrestled with trying to get information out to every household. And even mailing directly to households. I'm just curious how Mr. Flood, and I'm not asking for a response this evening, but other than direct mailings, having information on the town website as well as various social media. If Mr. Flood might send an email to Chair of the Select Board, Chair of the Planning Board, and Town Administrator, what other ways he thinks might supplement those that we have been trying for years to do? Thank you very much, Chair.
Yeah, so it's, it's honestly, it's not my job to.
Um, I've heard of that. We cannot go back and forth all dialogue, must go to the.
Well, that's, that's the problem with the town. You can't talk in meetings and go back and forth at a school committee meeting or at a planning board meeting or select board meeting because you guys have sheltered yourself from any kind of, anything like this. And at town meeting, when people bring up things, then everyone, you know, gets in a hustle bustle because they don't know. That's the, that's the, that's the problem.
This is not from the town. This is how town meetings.
And now I'm saying, and I'm saying the town is wrong.
Okay, let's, let's.
But what I'm saying is hundreds of people did not know what was in those meetings, in those articles. That's undeniable. You didn't do the job and people are outraged. I had people come up to me for a week and say, I had no idea that that could happen. And my question was in the email that I still haven't gotten a response to. Can every single person in town, if the ADU went through, build an ADU in their single family home? And I think the answer is yes. And can, and if the clusters go through, can every single property in town build town homes? I think the question, the answer is yes. I don't, I, I, I went through the charts. I went through this thing backwards. You have to go to three different areas and find out what is going. And I still haven't gotten an answer from you for that. So I, I'm here tonight to find out. I waited two hours to find out.
Where was this documentation?
I sent this, I sent this week ago to your administrator.
It's in our packet?
It's, my name is on the front of this thing. There's a letter received by Mr. Flood in the town of Lenham. I'm on the first bullet point.
So it came this week?
No, it came weeks ago. I sent it originally weeks ago. I resent it.
See, the December 19th.
I put it on Facebook and resent it to the town and she got back to me. I have the email right here. I, I wasn't even, and so you're asking me, what can we do? How about answer an email?
If I may respond, I do see that you sent it December 19th. I, as a planning board member, did not see it until it was posted in the packet, I think, Thursday or Friday. So, you know, almost a month passed before it was forwarded to us.
The other thing, can I just be really clear that we, Facebook is not, cannot be our, our.
Except for every town, every town, excuse me, every town, all of us has Facebook.
Let's have some respect. When a board member's speaking, let her speak. And we're not going to have back and forth. And so when a board member speaks, let her speak.
Sure.
Understood?
Understood.
Okay.
So through the chair.
Go ahead.
So I think it's, fortunately or unfortunately, it is a challenge, it is challenging to run public meetings. I've run 150 of them. And we have business and we have, I think we all know we have business. We have requirements and deadlines. And the, the process of the public meeting, which can be frustrating to the public, unfortunately, is the purpose is so they can, they can see, public comment is actually at the discretion of the chair. Some, some boards in other towns don't take any public comment. And that is, that is allowed and it's, so we are the ones charged with these things. So anyway, I just think that it is, you know, we've got the, the public, maybe a few people still watching. I think we don't, we don't communicate on Facebook as, if you want to reach us, please send us an email. I, to Meredith's point, we just got this on Thursday. So, and I overlooked it. I'll speak, I'll, I'll commit, I know that, so I apologize for that. And it was in our packet. So, but Facebook is, is not going to be the place, at least. We'll talk, we'll talk about procedures. But the other thing I just want to point out is we are volunteers. And, you know, we're trying to do the best we can. We did put out an awful lot of, this was proposed, we had two public hearings and about, and four years of public meetings. So it's a challenge to, to, to do this. And part of the reason that the changes were so many is because of COVID and they got pushed down the line. So we can do better. And it is challenge, it is a, zoning is complicated. And we have, this board prior to Laura and me joining inherited, you know, a wildebeest of zoning that didn't, you know, that the board has been working on for four years with the help of a consultant to try to improve. Is it perfect? No, but anyway. But I do appreciate you coming and.
May I respond to a couple of comments, please?
Yes, go ahead briefly.
As far as being volunteers, I understand that you put a lot of time in. I understand it. It is completely irrelevant to the fact that you're putting articles in front of the town of Manchester by the Sea. It is irrelevant that you're volunteers. You ran a political office, you got voted in, except for this fine young lady here that will probably run again in March. But it's irrelevant. I don't like that argument. Secondly, every single town office uses social media to communicate with us. They use Instagram, Facebook. I get posts all the time from everyone. To say that you can't use Facebook or you don't like to use Facebook because it's, it's, you know, there might be a lot of complainers on there. I understand that. I mean, it's obvious. Okay, it's 2023, there's a lot of that. But I put it on Facebook weeks after I sent the original email. And then I resent it to Ms., right here, to Gail, early after the new year because I figured people were away. So when I came in tonight, I waited two and a half hours to thought someone was going to answer my question about doing a little bit better job. I think that's the biggest problem you had with this. If you would have done a better job and you would have gone into the town meeting last fall and explained to people exactly what they can build on their property and what they can't with an affirmative vote on each article, you probably would have had a better situation than to have to table the whole thing and move on and then scrap some of those articles and move on to things now. As I'm saying, it was poorly done. And it's, you know, it is what it is, you know, take ownership of that. My wife says that all the time. Take ownership of some, a problem. Take ownership of it, volunteer or not. But I, I just, I, I just think that you need to slow down so everybody understands what's going on. There's a lot of things going on also with the MBTA suggested, or their, whatever their policies are. There's a lot coming at you, but you need to slow down and show everybody what's going on. I sat in a meeting for two and a half hours tonight. I've done a lot of meetings online. Most of the people in here, including the select board members, don't know what's going on totally. You guys are going back and forth and that's great, but not everyone knows what's going on and you're going by, through this very slowly. But you need to slow down and bring it to the town and have more open forums. If it takes more time out of your weeks, tough luck. This is huge. This is a massive change in, in Manchester by the Sea by allowing people to do town homes wherever. Selling big properties or, you know, big houses on the, on the ocean and so forth and building big things. That's a huge change, huge change. And I think that you guys are, have been doing all this work for a long time, but you, you're not listening to people that are on social media or Facebook page, which is really the only page on town. There's only one. And you, you, you need to do a better job of just getting it out there and letting people know and having more meetings if you need to. And if they don't come now, I, I guess they don't come. And you, we move forward with the town meeting. But the town meeting last fall was a disaster. That was a complete disaster.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And maybe you'll run for planner, planning board this spring. Okay, let's move on. The MAPC preliminary traffic study report discussion. So I just put this on the agenda. They'll be back to us in February with their final plan. I just wanted to remind the board at this time, are there any additional requests the board would like to make in their report? So I know we're small, we're only four of us tonight, but I put that on for, anybody had any additional items that they would like the traffic study to include? Uh, Mary?
So I was not able to be at the last December meeting, which I think it was presented or discussed. Actually, I can't watch it online either. But did they include the half-mile radius or the half-mile for the MBTA zoning, which would be more than relevant as a parking study?
They included the downtown, but, and they studied the downtown, but I don't think they marked the half-mile radius. Correct me if I'm.
I think they, well, the scope is the scope we agreed to when they started, which was not the entire half-mile radius.
But I think the last document they presented then added in and were looking at MBTA zoning. So that came after the, when the scope was defined. So if they're identifying the MBTA multifamily zoning, yet not studying that area, that doesn't really sync up. So I would have thought they would have added that.
I think we defined the scope of the study before the MBTA zoning came up. So if you look at their PowerPoint, the scope of the study, the areas that they studied are, you asked a question, did they do the half mile? I think the answer is no. And if you look at the PowerPoint, the first slide is the areas, the parking areas that they looked at.
But then I guess in that scenario, I would recommend that they remove, that they're making recommendations for MBT multifamily zoning as one of their goals. Because you can't make recommendations if you're not studying the area.
Or that they, that they limit their, can I rephrase that? To suggest that they limit the scope of their recommendations related to the 3A zoning to that which they can actually infer from.
The study.
The, the, the quarter mile or whatever, the, whatever it is that they, they can't infer. Yeah, I agree that you can't, can't.
Right, so they can only make suggestions based on, you know, they, they've done, you know, parts of downtown and.
Yeah.
Out, you know, so they've done very small scope, so recommendations for, agreed, should be with that scope. Okay, fair enough.
Betsy, can you transmit that to the MAPC?
And my comment was going to be that I did observe the day that the, the hot day that the parking lot was, the parking was, you know, the tally was down. I think you worked that day. I think it should be scaled up. And the way to scale it would be to say, just find out from Cheryl what the parking count was at the beach.
She had that information.
But he could scale his numbers. So if the beach was 75, 70% full or, you know.
Well, Cheryl said it was a very typical day of summer parking at the beach.
Yeah, it was just, it was not the, it wasn't your peak day.
It wasn't the peak day, but so what Cheryl's numbers were, were the same as a peak day.
Yeah.
I don't know what she said for the beach parking and.
I just feel like that he represented it as a peak day and it.
It was a cloudy drizzly day, wasn't it?
Oh, it wasn't, it was, it was not your perfect beach day.
Was partly sunny and then, yeah, it wasn't 95.
So I guess I, I would like to see him represent that as a 80% peak day. Or 85%, a, a whatever, a something less than a peak day in the negative.
But they weren't, they're not doing singing beach parking lot.
No, no, but it's more about, my point is if you, if, you know, there are days when a peak day, singing beach is packed all day long, all day with a line waiting to get in.
Right.
So if it was 80% full, then consider the numbers of parking to be an 80% peak.
And Cheryl's, so the singing beach point was just a point of reference. And what Cheryl said was it was just like any other peak day, was as busy as singing beach.
Okay, so maybe it is peak day, Anna. Hard to say.
I would assume that, and I wasn't here, so, but I would assume that means that the parking lot was full, right?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever percent full that it typically is, there's some in and out.
I guess, given that people know it wasn't the perfect bright, hot, you know, 90-degree summer day, I would use a methodology based on the whatever Cheryl said. If Cheryl said it was full at singing beach, then it is a peak day. If Cheryl says it's 95% at the beach, then it's a 95% peak day. All I'm saying is create a methodology to address that. I don't care what, I, I want, just, whatever the methodology is, there needs to be some acknowledgement that people perceive it not as the perfect day.
Because the methodology would have to include a peak day means that there's parking at the high school. There's parking throughout town.
Well, I can't, we can't, we can't measure what we didn't measure.
Right.
So we, we, we ought to report the number that was.
Yes.
Inventoryed. And then maybe just a reference point is singing beach was X.
98% full or whatever.
Capacity that day. And yeah, how does it relate to a peak summer day, 95 to 100 or 100, it was 100.
Yeah, just create a methodology.
Cheryl could give us that. I don't think that's up to the MAPC group to give us.
She can just give it as a reference.
Yeah.
That's my point is I just think that.
Singing beach was X and that, that equates to an X percent.
Right, a peak day, you know, in any kind of study, you don't design for a peak on electricity or water supply or parking. That's not a best practice. But it's good to have some methodology that says what the peak was, so.
I guess I'm unclear, why are we using singing beach parking lot if they're not studying singing beach parking lot?
We're simply saying, all I'm saying is if singing beach was 100% full, then it says it was a peak day. Create a methodology for scaling that, that day. Do you understand? Am I making sense? Like.
You're making sense, but.
If there were 100 cars on, if there were 95 cars on the street and it was a 95% day at the beach, then a peak day on the street would be 100 cars, if you could, had a hundred. So there were, there were empty spaces that day, which is interesting, very interesting.
And typical of what they find in most studies.
Right.
So it was 80, 80 or 85% capacity, I think they found.
So.
Yeah, I don't think it's a, it's a point-to-point measurement, is there, like it, like it would have played the number.
It's maybe it's an asterisk.
It's just a point of reference, asterisk, singing beach was at X percent capacity.
That day.
That day.
People can infer what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it's a big deal, but. Okay.
The curb cut regulations I'd like to pass over where Chris isn't here, Christine isn't here. And this one isn't in the new member yet. Betsy put together a planner's report. It was in your packet. I thought it was well done. Any comments?
Because I think it's very helpful.
What it was, yeah. Thank you, Betsy.
You're welcome.
Can I ask questions on that?
Uh, Mary had a couple of questions for you, Betsy, on that.
So I, I think I'm still trying to get some clarity on those grants, but that can be offline.
Clarity on what?
On the civic spaces, the different grants that the.
So these grants were submitted well before I came on board. They were funded. There are two grants. One is called the Mass Downtown Initiative Grant, an MDI grant. And that was submitted specifically for, to look at the downtown and to look at basically creation of some additional public spaces for art, for public parks and for wayfinding and signage. And also to potentially find a location for public restrooms in the downtown area. The second grant was a urban agenda grant. And that grant was for, originally for 51,000 for off-peak events, preferably February and March to support the business community. Originally, the grant was to be split between Essex and Manchester. And it turns out that the grant funding agency gave 51,000 to each community. So at present, Tiffany Marletta is the lead on that. And she is working on some kind of fabulous public event or events downtown. and she is working on some kind of fabulous public event or events downtown, um, for the month of February. And one of the things we, um, talked about was potentially ice skating in, uh, using fake ice in, um, Mascanomo Park, also some musical events and, um, integrating the, um, town businesses, um, private businesses to, uh, participate in some capacity to, and the whole idea of the ice skating and the musical events is to get people downtown and to use the downtown business community. So, um, I don't know exactly how these grants were formulated, but, uh, that's what they were funded for.
Uh, thank you, Betsy, I was laughing cause your dog was doing all sorts of funny stretches in the background. Yeah, my, my question, which I was emailing this morning, which I'll, I'll just ask for the grant application, is the first one which was made under a placemaking grant and then it, I don't, it exploded into additional park space, public restrooms and public art, so I just don't, didn't see a connection.
Well, the, the MDI grant was submitted under placemaking and, um, creation of new parks, creation of public art spaces, things like that are placemaking.
Becky?
Um, these, thank you, um, Becky Drake Select Board. Uh, these were done in connection with LARPA, um, funding that came around. And, um, we had done some studies with Essex. So in terms of trying to help promote local businesses and taking some potential grant monies, which we did subsequently get in trying to reinvigorate, um, the downtown in off-peak season. So those, these, those both came out of, um, LARPA, uh, local, local, um, the relief from COVID.
Okay, thank you.
That's how those came about.
And then I just had one more comment on the, um, um, the, um, MBTA communities, um, technical funding, um, we should be careful of which bucket of money we get that from because some of those, um, some of those fun, technical funding initiatives are through those three buckets of funding that link to the MBTA multifamily housing. So, um, we should just be sure to get it from a source that's not listed as one of those until we know what we're doing.
I, I guess I'm not clear on what you're talking about. There's, um, MAPC has offered funding for, um, specifically for grant, um, grant support for, um, to look at MBTA, um, zoning, um, so has Mass Housing Partnership. Um, and I, I'm not fully versed, but there are a couple of other agencies that are offering funding to examine MBTA housing for specific communities. So I don't quite understand what you're saying.
So what I'm saying is some of the state grant funding is, falls under one of those three buckets of, um, grant funding that links to MBT multi-family housing. So just like with the Mass Works grants, it's not Mass Works, but it's one of the local, but I forget the name of it, but, but so we can get money from here or we could get money from here and if we get it from here, it's linked to the, um, three buckets that pertain to the multifamily.
But can't we get it, I think the point is to get it in advance to help with the planning of those, of the zoning, right?
Um, and that's fine, I guess as long as it's all used up before we make a decision.
Oh, you're worried that we'd have to pay it back or something?
Yes.
If we didn't pass it?
Yes.
So I guess that's a good point, we wanna make sure it doesn't have strings attached to it. But I think the point of it is, which I thought was positive, that I feel like we do need technical assistance here. And so however it's gonna get provided.
Yeah, cause I did have a question of who in town, and I think it's just the assessor's office, has the actual software for the compliance modeling?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
State, is it on a state?
You can get like a, quote license, I thought, but.
Yeah, cause we should have it in-house that we're not, not relying just on a consultant to do the modeling, that we're doing it as a town.
I tried to download it and it was wild looking.
It probably takes up a lot of space.
Maybe Tiffany could look into that.
Yeah, well, I think that the point is, it'd be great if a consultant builds out, there's some, there's a whole bunch of steps. I don't know if you've looked at it, um, Betsy, but when you go to the compliance software website, there's like all these zip files that you download. So if we get a consultant, um, to sort of to Mary's point, we wanna make sure we own the, out, the data and then can work with it, but if they can set it up and go through all those zip files and figure out how to actually, I mean, it seemed like it was a, they advertised it as a model that you could sort of play with different scenarios. When I tried to download it, I was, maybe it was late at night, but it was looked like we needed some help to figure out how, how to use it.
What is the problem?
How to set it up?
Very complex and I forget the, uh, Betsy might have it, I forget the, um, yeah.
It wasn't a GIS.
Not like, just, it's not something like, it's just like dot GIS, but it's not that, it's some other.
Wasn't ArcGO or, uh, was, I don't know.
But it enables you to, you know, obviously identify the water and the parking lots and the this and the that. And so you can get, um, a clear picture of actually what is buildable and then what would be the acreage and, um.
Sounds like a GIS system.
Yeah.
It might be, but it's like a souped-up one, so.
Yeah, GIS is pretty souped up already, does our town, our town has GIS capacity, right?
But that's why I think it's just the assessor's office, I don't know.
You need a WIN RAR license.
I think that's free.
Do you have a forty-day trial period and then you either buy a license or move it from your computer?
Time later.
Yeah.
All right, we'll check on that. All right. Done? Liaison reports I put in your packet. Sunday, uh, the CPC requested, uh, projects. The CPC will be voting on the projects to move them forward to the Select Board meeting Thursday at five thirty. That's what I have on the CPC, anyone else have any liaison reports from their attendance? Okay, um, approval of regular minutes, eleven-nine, I had one comment. After, um, Gail has the articles, thirteen of sixteen, it says, Ms. Foley asked if there was, to be no discussion on the proposed moving and seconding of motions on the articles. Mr. Master Giacomo replied that he chose the best four of members, I think it should say he chose. That's the only comment, I have any other comments on the minutes?
I don't see these in our meeting packet.
I printed everything out on Saturday morning and nothing was in the folder, so I don't.
The minutes weren't in the folder?
They're in the folder.
I also looked on Saturday morning and I did not see minutes.
They might have been added, but I didn't see.
So do you wanna hold on the minutes then?
I mean, if they're short, then we can pull them up right now, we can look at them, they're not short.
You know, there are a lot of stuff going on there, six pages. Um, that means they won't be looked at till February, unless we want to, uh, I don't know if we can approve them at our retreat.
We can approve them at our retreat.
What's a retreat?
Retreat.
Next week.
Two weeks.
Retreat from the third.
All right, we'll pass on the minutes. Other matters not reasonably anticipated the chair, so on January third, I received a request from Sue Croft indicating that the town was recently awarded more than a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars through the Coastal Zone Management Coastal Resilience Grant Program to develop a coastal vulnerability action plan. The consultants who specialize in these type of municipal plans and will be guiding the town to develop this plan are in, uh, with a company called Fussin' O'Neil. In order to make sure that the community is engaged with this process, Fussin' O'Neil and the Select Board have requested that a steering committee be created to provide pe, feedback throughout the planning process. She reached out to me from the, and look for, uh, that a member from the planning board be appointed to this steering committee. Subsequently, I asked Laura Tenny to serve as our representative. Currently, her work, uh, she is one of, in her work, she's one of a team of three people from MIT's Planning Facilities and Stetainability Departments, leading the development of a plan for MIT's Climate Adaptation and Resilience Initiative. So this, uh, would be along, along a similar theme and, uh, I asked Laura to, um, take up and Laura has accepted the position. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. You're welcome, with some time constraints, as noted, uh, in terms of meeting availabilities, but yes. And I understand it's a, um, it's true about you as the project manager.
Can we ask them for model, um, resilience, uh, zoning standards?
Good idea.
Okay, we can go through Laura for any things, that's a good idea. Okay, um, so anybody have anything else? Uh, so next meeting is our retreat and, and I'm trying to, I'm still trying to get a contract with the Manchester Community Center to hold it there, if it changes, maybe we'll ha, hold it here, but my plan is to meet there. I haven't come up with an agenda, but I know at first, what we normally do is just, everybody goes around and explains their background, at least that's what we did last time, and then I'll come up with some kind of, um, I think we're gonna try to discuss policies and procedures going forward, is one of the topics. I ask you to bring your own beverage, I am going to try to provide some kind of nourishment, maybe pizza or something.
Is it same time, six-thirty?
It's six-thirty.
And is there gonna be a Zoom component or is it a meeting without Zoom?
No, it will not be Zoom, uh, it'll be, but the public can attend, uh, the, uh, community center has a ramp, a handicap ramp and, uh.
That's a public meeting. A public, public.
But we will not take public comment, right?
No public comment, it'll just be us talking plainly.
And eating.
And we welcome you as your Susan, then first.
I'll make sure I'm sworn in, then.
Okay. All right, um, anything else, anybody else, Sarah?
Um, I am willing to sit with Sue and show her how to use SharePoint and, um, all of that.
Oh.
But, if somebody else wants to.
Sorry to keep you up so late, Miss James.
It's early.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Someone will.
Second it?
Second.
Roll call, it's Tenny?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you all for coming, happy new year.